Good afternoon. I want to welcome everyone to our legislators town meeting. I'm Jane Mastitis. I'm the CEO of Saratoga Bridges, and we're so pleased to be hosting this town meeting. We want to discuss two of the most critical issues we're all facing. The workforce crisis, as well as the necessity to ensure adequate funding remains in the 2022 New York State budget. We wish we were all in person, but the ability to do this virtually through Zoom ensures we can continue to advocate for the individuals we support, their families, and our dedicated teams. We are recording this town meeting. It will be posted on our Facebook pages, hopefully by Monday. First, I want to introduce all of our legislators who are joining us. Your New York ARC chapters, whose constituents you represent. Senator James Tedesco and Policy Director Jonathan Pirro. And Legislative Director Patrick Cronin. Senator Dan Stack, represented by Chief of Staff Debbie Cappizuti. Assemblyman John McDonald III. Assemblyman Matthew Simpson and Chief of Staff Matt McDonald. Assemblyman Mary Beth Walsh and Chief of Staff Samantha Torrey. And Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Carrie Warner. Our chapters: Advocacy and Resource Center of Clinton County; Essex ARC; Lexington ARC of Fulton and Schuhary Counties; Rensselaar ARC; Saratoga Bridges; Schenectady ARC; and the Warren Washington Albany ARC. Thank you so much for being here today with us and your ongoing support. We need it now more than ever before. We're thrilled to have several people who are going to share their own stories and experiences that describe the current workforce crisis that all fellow voluntary agencies are enduring. First, I want to introduce Amber Benoit. She's a self-advocate specialist at the ARC of Rensselaar. Approaching her fourth year in this role. She's been active on their Agency Self-Avocacy Committee for the past nine years, and she would like to share some words on the importance of staffing. Amber?
I'd like to thank every one of you for inviting me to be on here today. I'm going to start. I'm a little bit nervous. I'm so sorry. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amber Benoit. I started with the ARC approximately seven years ago. I participated in Supportive Living and Supportive Employment Programs. With the help of my employment specialists, I am now the self-advocate specialist. As a self-advocacy specialist, I am here to advocate all the DSPs and individuals. We need to help each other out. Everyone needs a DSP for extra help. The more help from the DSPs, the better our lives are. The DSPs I have worked with have helped me grow as an individual. They helped me with the skills I want to build. I have learned about managing my finances, healthy cooking, and doing things in the community. The DSPs are also fun and would... are also fun, and it is also fun and is important to connect with our DSPs you are working with. The DSPs are hard workers. They try their best to help you through your day-to-day, whether it's medical appointments, grocery shopping, cooking, cleaning, budgeting. The list goes on. They are always concerned with your well-being, often check in to make sure we are doing well. They also want to make sure we are living in a quality of life. They work hard, and they always come in with the smiles on their faces, but not let's forget, there are also people too. It is nice to check in on them. The job isn't always easy, especially during a pandemic. The workload is heavy, so I try to make the stress-free... try to make the day stress-free when I can by laughing at something funny, staying in the car and making their day... I am so sorry. Singing in the car, making a day a little more enjoyable. I can always rely on staff when someone needs to talk to. Oh, no. What happened? Can everybody hear me okay?
You're fine.
Whoa, my gosh. I am so sorry.
You're doing great, Amber.
Let me start again. Singing in the car, making their day a little more enjoyable. I can always rely on staff when I need someone to talk to. They are great at what I do, what they do, because I always feel better right after. They are truly improved my quality of life. Thank you.
Great job, Amber. Thank you for sharing.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Next up is Christina Collins. She's worked for the Schenectady ARC for over seven years. She started as a direct support professional or DSP in day services. She became a program coordinator and most recently was promoted to the Assistant Director of Supported Employment Services. Christina is active on their annual fundraising event committee and continues to work many evenings and weekend shifts in one of their homes. No matter what her official title or role is, direct support is a large part of her daily job duties. She finds that aspect most fulfilling. Christina?
Thank you. Hello. My name is Christina Collins, and I've been an employee at Schenectady ARC for over seven years. I started as a DSP in a day program, fresh out of college and brand-new to the field. I worked my way to program coordinator and eventually took my current role as Assistant Director of Supported Employment Services. Now, you might be asking yourself why an assistant director was chosen to speak from the perspective of a DSP. The answer is quite simple. I have not stopped providing direct services since the day I started and made DSP role in 2014. I've had the privilege of providing services to individuals in a variety of different settings. For example, as a community hub worker, I've assisted a person living with her family to go out to dinner with someone that wasn't her parents and to help her purchase Christmas presents for them. As a DSP in a residential setting, I've assisted somebody with the most intimate of care, such as supporting someone returning home after a hip replacement and helping them to create new toileting, bathing, and relaxation routines, and supporting them through what used to be easy tasks, such as getting in and out of bed, but are now much more challenging. As a DSP in day hub, I've helped people to volunteer in their community, to clean up trash, to beautify their community, and learn how to be more independent in their daily lives. And most recently, I've had the incredible opportunity to support those working in our community pre-voc program by teaching transferable work skills to help those achieve their employment goals. All of these tasks that I've mentioned above are skills that you and I take for granted in our daily life. But those that we support, our presence is mandatory in their day-to-day life. Our agency alone, we have a DSP vacancy rate of over 40%. That's approximately 110 to 120 jobs in direct care that need to be filled. Unlike other businesses, those jobs can't just go undone. Those vacant positions translate into vacant shifts that must be filled. So, who's filling these shifts, you might ask? People such as my chef, middle management, senior management, other departments such as our business office, compliance department, nursing, administrative support staff, and hours upon hours of overtime from our current DSPs. This is simply not sustainable. The livelihood of our staff is suffering, and the quality of services provided unintentionally declines, whether it's the person hired as a DSP who's working 80-plus hours a week or an assistant director such as myself, who leaves my current role and goes right to a house to fill an evening shift. We, as in the field of supporting people with developmental and intellectual disabilities, has worked too hard. We've come so far from the days of institutions. We've dedicated our lives to promoting independence among those that we support. We've been very successful in assisting people to become contributing members of their communities through employment opportunities, socialization programs, and community housing options, just to name a few. All of that is at stake right now for the future if we don't start planning today. We need commitment to continued support. We are grateful for the EPMAF funding that supports our current direct staff that we have, but the reality is that one-shot funding does not apply to all of our staff. It does not help us keep up with inflammation, and it will not support us as a whole long-term. We recognize that this proposed budget is the best support, the best that our field has seen to date, and now we need support from you. The proposed 5.4% COLA will directly improve the ability for agencies such as ours to keep up with inflation, provide quality services, and pay all of our staff well-deserved livable wages. We need long-term investment in our field to help us help those that need us most in our communities. Now, as you continue to listen to parents, self-advocates, and staff in the next hour or so, please keep in mind this question. What do you need from us as agencies to gain your support? Thank you for listening.
Great job. Appreciate it. That was excellent. Thank you, Christina. Next, we have Mary Jo Hebert. She's a parent of a 30-year-old son who resides at Saratoga Bridges, where he is supported and cared for by our hard-working and dedicated DSPs. She also serves on our Board of Directors and is on the Board of Governors for the Arc of New York. Mary Jo brings 17 years of experience supporting families of loved ones with disabilities and serious health concerns through her past work with parent-to-parent of New York State, a family-supported nonprofit funded by OPWDD and the Development of Disability Planning Council. Mary Jo?
Thanks, Jane. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Ten years ago, my son Louis moved into a community-based home that Saratoga Bridges operates. He lives with four housemates. Until you've had a loved one who lives in a group home, it's difficult to appreciate the enormity of responsibilities shouldered by DSPs and other staff members. DSPs are responsible for managing medications, scheduling, coordinating, and attending doctor appointments, shopping, preparing meals, cleaning homes, conducting fire drills, and in our son's case, helping with all of his personal care needs and activities of daily living. In addition to Louis's routine medications, he often requires the administration of emergency drugs during prolonged seizures. Due to his seizure disorder and high risk of falling, he must be shadowed at all times he is ambulatory. Particular care must be taken when brushing his teeth. If he should bite down on a toothbrush during a seizure, he can accidentally swallow the toothbrush, as has happened before. Frequently, he needs to be showered during the night and have his bed linens changed. Keep in mind that my son is just one of five individuals who rely upon a single DSP to have their own similarly complex physical, behavioral, and emotional needs met. Our homes are short-staffed, and DSPs are exhausted. If that is not enough to describe our reality, DSPs earn a wage well below what they need to sustain a household and a fair quality of life. Their hourly starting wages are the equivalent to the cost of three McDonald's Happy Meals. And while the pandemic has exacerbated an already critical need, make no mistake that the DSP crisis existed long before the advent of Delta and Omicron. In December of last year, the turnover rate in my son's group home was an astounding 50%, and yet, it was not uncommon to see these same vacancy rates or worse prior to the pandemic. Given the severity of our current situation, a prediction was made in our field that with the staffing shortage at a breaking point, an unavoidable tragedy has the real possibility of occurring. The dire consequence will propel our field back into the media and have people asking, "How could this happen?" Amber knows how it could happen. Christina knows how it could happen. And now, all the rest of us do too. You are witnessing and hearing a mom who is telling you about a stretched-toothed staff, low wages, the never-ending vacancies, and bankrupting overtime. Do I sound frustrated and scared? Yes, you bet I do. Family members owe an endless debt of gratitude to our DSPs for all they do each and every day. It is a long, long overdue that we repay them in a meaningful way and treat them with the dignity that they so clearly deserve. It is vital that we attract talented, compassionate people into a career of direct support to lessen the strain we are facing while ensuring our loved ones are well-cared-for. At the same time, it is imperative to retain those who have been working so tirelessly and heroically these past two years. I implore you to ensure that the funding proposed in the executive budget remain there. Our future depends on your support, and we look to you to help educate any of your colleagues who would seek to diminish these gains. As your voting constituents, we will be following the budget process and hope you stay the course so that the provisions remain in their one-house bills, become tangible policy, and are ultimately enacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Jo. And if I could just interject, just for a perspective, at Saratoga, our overtime for 2020 was $875,000. For 2021, it's over $1.5 million in just overtime. That's just one chapter, so you can see just from one year to the next how that number has just grown dramatically, and I'm sure all of our sister chapters have the same thing. Next, Kyle Ricks is a DSP at Lexington ARC. With many years of service, he is presently working in their Supportive Apartment Program, where he goes from home to home to ensure that individuals are successfully independent. Kyle?
Kyle, you're on mute.
There you go, Kyle.
All right. Sorry. When I was asked to be muted, I think I pushed too many buttons. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming and listening to the concerns felt by all. My name is Kyle Ricks. I've been in the direct support specialist role for many years. I started 18 years ago, and I've been in the residential program. I can truly say that I love the job that I do for the men and women I support daily. My job has always been very responsible, but always shared by many, and with less people here, it's become very stressful. Longer shifts, more hours, making us all feel very stretched thin. We need to ensure the safety of all the people we support by getting the funding in the upcoming budget when it is passed. 5.4% sounds wonderful, but if we could raise that above that, it would truly be felt for a positive impact for all. Thank you so much.
Kyle, thank you.
Yes.
Next, we have Holly Lyons. She's from the Warren Washington Albany ARC, and she offers a unique perspective of being a mother to a young man with autism, as well as working in the ADD field for over 20 years. She has worked as a teaching assistant, administrative assistant, a DSP, a pre-vocational counselor, and is now a habilitation service provider. Holly?
Thank you, Jane, and good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by asking if any of you have a loved one that has provided services by any agency that supports individuals with a disability? Those of you that raised your hands, what would be your greatest hope for your loved one? I posed the same question to those of you that didn't. My greatest hope is that my son is happy, as any parent would hope for their child. Happiness is different for everyone. However, as the parent of a son with autism, my other greatest hope is that he will always have services to rely on to help him succeed in life. My son is where he is at today because of the many staff members who have helped him to be confident in himself, to have appropriate ways to cope with and react to his stressors, and most importantly, to believe in himself. You can tell someone you love how wonderful they are countless times a day, but the reality is, it means more when that message comes from someone who is not a relative or friend. It is most impactful and beneficial to an individual's self-esteem and growth when it comes from a direct support professional. Direct support professionals are a vital part of the lives of individuals with disabilities. They wear all the hats. They are teachers, teachers, pardon me, mentors, friends, and even service companions that provide medical care. They often provide medical care that most of us would not feel comfortable providing to a close family member. Many individuals in the care of agencies do not have familial support at all. Their direct support professionals are their family. Direct support professionals are one of the most integral pieces of their support system. Right now, individuals with disabilities are at a disadvantage because of the current lack of funding for the agencies that support them. Without proper funding, we are telling direct support professionals that they hold little value to the world outside of the people they support, since they are not paid a living wage. This often leads to high vacancy of positions, mandatory overtime to fill demand, high turnover rates, and compassion fatigue. If we are to make meaningful change, we must recognize that direct support professionals are marginalized and that our inaction and inattention will only lead us to further denigrate the people who take on this important work. If we value individuals with disabilities, we need to show that we value the people who work for and with them as well. My son will always need support, and as I look to the future, I truly hope that his supports are provided by people that are in the job, first and foremost, because they care about individuals with disabilities and because they enjoy helping them succeed in their lives, but also because they can provide for their families when their pay is commensurate to the services they provide. The last great disgrace in our field was Willowbrook. If you are not familiar with the Willowbrook story, I encourage you to educate yourself. It revealed to this country the horrific conditions that some individuals with disabilities have lived in, and as a parent of a son with autism, I am grateful that the Willowbrook story broke because it helped change the way services to individuals with disabilities are provided. The biggest horror we could face is if the days of Willowbrook's injustices happened again. I'm here to ask you for your support to include our field in the budget. Please help my son, countless sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, and friends who have disabilities to be cared for and loved and to be provided with the services and the support that they need to succeed and to live their dreams. They achieve their dreams and lead fulfilling lives with the help of their circle of support, and at the heart of that circle are direct support professionals. I'm so glad that you are here today because you are the people who can make that change. Choose living wages and respectful employment, and in doing so, you'll choose success and happiness for everyone living with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. And since you brought up Willowbrook, let me just add that we are hosting today from DA Collins. They're generous enough to let us use their training room. It is the old Wilton Developmental Center, which they purchased in 2003, so a bit ironic. Next, we have Richard Hickey. He's a proud self-advocate and past president of one of Saratoga Bridges' self-advocacy groups. One of Richard's lifelong goals was to live on his own. He achieved this four years ago when he and his roommate moved into one of our supportive apartments in downtown Saratoga Springs. Richard is presently looking for a new job in the community, if anybody has one, and has a few sentiments to share. Let me welcome Richard. You can take your mask off.
Yeah. Hello. I'm Richard Hickey. I need staff to help me with making doctor's appointments, banking, and budgeting, grocery shopping, and medication tracking. My staff is very important to me and help me with staying on track so I can live independently as possible. Past two years have been difficult because, first, we had stayed in our promise and didn't get out because of COVID. Now, I have time to get... My staff is very limited to getting done exactly what needs to be done. The extra time they once gave me to help me fill applications and/or find out, try new recipes, just isn't there because we have only a few staff and a lot of people to see. I miss the days of spending time and be able to do difficult community events with staff. I came today to ask for more in my staff, more pay, so more people will want to come and work with people like me who can be as independent but need extra help and guidance. Thank you.
Great job, Richard. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Next, we have Kathy Domeno, who has served at the Rensselaar County Executive from 2001 until 2017. Before this, she had a long career in government where she helped the city, county, and state in many capacities. Kathy is the Assistant Treasurer at the ARC of Rensselaar and is a leader on several local boards. Kathy?
Thanks very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm not only a board member of the Arc of Rensselaar County, but I'm also a family member of two individuals who received services from the Arc prior to their passing. I'd like to thank our state legislators for joining us today, as well as the other speakers who've shared their concerns and their thoughts. As you've heard, and as you no doubt know, we have a crisis of staffing in the ADD community of providers, and that stems from the low pay that we're allowed to pay through the Arc because of the Medicaid rate set by the state. Our DSPs have a starting pay rate of about $14 an hour, or approximately $29,000 a year. McDonald's will pay them $15 an hour. Amazon will pay them $18 an hour. But the really tough pill for me, anyway, to swallow is that New York State will pay them $19 an hour to do the exact same job but in the state facility. So, that's five more dollars an hour that the state pays than they will allow us to pay. The executive budget announced earlier this week includes some one-time money for our DSPs, for which we are tremendously grateful. But really, the ongoing increase or the COLA included in the proposed budget amounts to only about 75 cents an hour, or another $30 a week. So, what would you do if you only made $29,000 a year? And what if your job included mandatory overtime because there was no one to come in and cover the next shift because of vacant positions? And what if you had a family to provide for, or you had family events that you wanted to attend, like your kids' school concerts or birthday parties, but you couldn't go because you had to cover another shift? You know, none of us can argue about why our DSPs leave to go elsewhere, but then what happens to our family members? They must deal with the changing caregivers on whom they depend for everything, as we've heard, from bathing to dressing, from meal planning and medication delivery, to sharing their ideas and their wishes for what experiences would make their lives better. Our family members also have to deal with less activities, less people to transport them to activities, less people to provide the activities, less people to get them to community activities for integration, or to help them find jobs. Our family members are becoming isolated. They have less opportunities to thrive, and they're losing their ability to establish and maintain a relationship with their caregiver. As family members, we want our loved ones to receive the services they're entitled to, services that recognize their dignity as human beings. And I don't think that we're asking for too much. You know, my cousins enjoyed really simple pleasures, a car ride, a coffee from Dunkin' Donuts, a trip to the Harley-Davidson store, or an outing to the movies to see the latest Marvel comics release. The simple pleasures along with the basic care that they need to survive and thrive. But how are they going to get that without staff? You heard from Holly about another time in our state's history when insufficient funding and staffing turned a service model that was well-intentioned into a national disgrace. Willowbrook, a program for those with disabilities, really isolated them and became a best-of-warehouse for them. And really, much, much worse, it robbed people of their basic humanity. As family members, we fear that the current path we are on will lead us back there, and that really scares us. And let me tell you, we can't let that happen. We won't let that happen. We're not going back to Willowbrook. But we need your help, state legislators. We need your help. We ask you to please include in this year's state budget an increase in the wages for our DSPs beyond the proposed COLA in that budget so that our staff will be paid a wage that recognizes the important work that they do and the dignity and the humanity of those that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Well said. Our last speaker is Yolanda Gill, whom I'm extremely proud to say works on my team at Saratoga Bridges. She exemplifies the extraordinary dedication, devotion, commitment, and compassion that any of us would want, our care and support of our loved ones. There aren't enough accolades to share about Yolanda, who is beloved by our individuals, family members, and coworkers. Yolanda?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Gill. I have worked as a DSP since 1987. I came to Saratoga Bridges 27 years ago as a DSP and have worked my way up to being a manager up to home. My entire career has been taking care of individuals who need support to live the same type of life we all want to live. Along with this job comes many hours. We also wear many hats. We are their nurse to assist them with their medical appointments, medications, and counseling. We assist them with their personal care, shopping, cooking, and planning activities at home and in the community. We try to have our individuals become as independent as possible, encourage them to reach their goals, big and small. We want them to succeed and become their biggest cheerleaders all along the way. When they do a great job at something they have worked so hard to achieve, we are there to give them a high five, and we help prepare them to become employed and to live a life on their own. For most of the individuals who we support, we become their families. We are there for them with a shoulder to cry on when they are upset and a hug when they feel alone and scared. We celebrate Thanksgiving, Christmas, and birthdays with them when they have families who are not part of their lives or live too far away. We make sure they have presents that they are wishing for because we know what they like. And even if our individuals are nonverbal, we are able to communicate with them. Just recently, one of the individuals I care for became very sick with COVID, but that did not stop me from going to the hospital to be with her. I was there, holding her hand, softly stroking her head, and whispering to her how much I loved her. I did not want her to be afraid to be alone in a strange place without comforting voice while she was taking her last breath. It broke my heart, but I would not hesitate to do it again. However, the staffing shortage makes it impossible to give our individuals the opportunities they deserve. We are working unbelievably crazy hours. Just last weekend, I worked a 24-hour shift to ensure that our individuals had the care they needed due to the shortage of staffing. I am here today to strongly advocate and encourage all of you to support salary increases for my staff and others who would welcome into our agencies. But they won't come to Saratoga Bridges or any agency like ours with a fair and living wage. How can you possibly not support people who dedicate their lives to helping others succeed? How can you not support people who work each and every day to make sure our individuals can reach their hopes and dreams? Our individuals deserve to have properly trained and consistent staff members, and the only way this is going to happen is if funds are put into the budget. Bridges, I want to thank you for your time and ongoing support.
Thank you for sharing with us, Yolanda. We are unbelievably grateful to each and one of you who was willing to just share your experience and challenges and difficulties with us. As providers, we continue to express our challenges each and every year, but to hear directly from our self-advocates dedicated to families and their concerns and frustrations. The ADD community has known for a while now that we are in crisis, but now the attention needs to be amplified as to how severe the situation truly is. Many of us have been forced to close or reduce operations because of staffing shortages. We are turning away referrals, struggling to achieve quality standards, and continue to experience high turnover and vacancy rates, and have challenges in recruiting and retaining qualified direct support professionals. Additionally, we're facing other operating pressures, regulatory compliance, quality of care issues, and expansion needs. Costs relating to fringe benefits, repairs, maintenance, utilities, food supplies, transportation, and insurance have resulted in significant financial pressure for our agencies. We are solely funded by Medicaid. Agencies are unable to increase reimbursement for services to compensate for increased costs of operations. This has led directly to the provider agencies' inability to invest in our direct support workforce, which has resulted in wage stagnation for the past decade. The struggle is only too real and heartbreaking, just as you heard. Our staff provides vital, life-altering services, not only for the individuals we support, but the staff pulling double and triple shelf shifts to help those in need. They do it because of their unyielding dedication and compassion. Unfortunately, this is simply unsustainable. We're here today to say there are consequential ramifications of decades of inadequate investments in the service delivery system for New Yorkers with intellectual or developmental disabilities. Our individuals may be some of the most vulnerable, but their needs must be met as they do not deserve to have their ability of life diminished. We make no mistake, while the pandemic has truly exacerbated it, this happened long before COVID and will not go away, hopefully after COVID. Agencies need funding, not just through the pandemic, but heading into the future. We have gone into our own thin cash reserves to pay emergency bonuses and incentives just to keep our service delivery operable. There's a limit to our resilience. We do not have any other choice and need help. We deemed our staff essential workers from the onset of the pandemic, and they truly are. Now is the time for New York to lead the country in investing in that workforce. We're committing to moving beyond the direct care workforce crisis once and for all. This can be done by ensuring that the 2022 budget incorporates the 5.4% COLA and, as others have mentioned, more support for wages. We feel like a new dawn has risen over New York as Governor Hochul appears to be a strong partner for us. The proposed COLA is expected to improve recruitment and retention of workers employed by voluntary provider agencies as well as provide for inflationary cost increase. As stated before, we're very grateful for the FMAP funding that will be coming down, but most of it is one-shot bonuses for the direct support professionals. The need for ongoing increased compensation is essential in ensuring future staffing needs. The future viability of our field depends on you and your fellow legislators. We hope you'll take all this information and vote on our behalf and support the endeavors we are putting before you. We're grateful for your support and truly appreciate taking your time to participate in this town meeting today. I would like to open the floor to the legislators for any comments or questions you have, and also welcome the other CEOs for any additional comments. Please feel free to unmute yourself. Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, Jane, this is Kirk Lewis from Schenectady ARC. And I want to thank the legislators for being here. Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, we've met before, and I know you are a tremendous supporter of our field. We've worked with Jim Tedesco. His family received services from Schenectady ARC many years ago. So I know we've been fortunate to have many legislators who are strong supporters and who really understand the needs and the concerns that have been raised today and that we've raised with you for years, to be honest. And what we are seeing right now is the result of really 12 years of neglect in funding, where we did not get COLAs, we did not get systematic increases. And we have a start with the 5.4% COLA, but as several people have mentioned, we need sustained funding so we can raise the wages. In 2006, we were able to pay our DSPs 50% above minimum wage. You know, as someone mentioned, our average starting salary now is a dollar below the fast-food minimum wage. So we have a great start, but we do need help. And we look to you. And I think the question I would ask the legislators is, and again, I know we have many supporters here, is what can we do to assist you? How can we help make the case and make sure that the legislature supports and helps us get what we need? You know, the legislature has been good. A year ago, when the governor didn't do it, they put the 1% COLA in that the governor had omitted. We need to build on that. The 5.4% does that, but we need continued support. So please tell us what ways we can help you keep this issue in the forefront and keep moving this forward.
I see Assemblyman John McDonald III. Do you like to speak? You're unmuted.
Thank you, everybody. And thanks for the opportunity to listen, but also to participate a little bit. You know, this is my 10th budget, and this is actually the first time we've actually seen the executive put forward an increase, which, as I said to the folks and many of my colleagues, we were on another forum together earlier this morning. I think we'd all agree that this is the floor. This is where we start. So we're off to a good start. And you know, as one who actually still practices healthcare and works closely with the disability community in mental health and substance use, I want to thank you because you all talked about whether is listening to Amber, how important it is to her, listen to Christina and their role, listen to Mary Jo as the eyes of a parent. What you didn't say is actually what I see regularly. It's not an easy job. It's a labor of love in many aspects. I firsthand have had the opportunity, particularly the last couple of months, because in some of the agencies I work with, they are so short-staffed, they have difficulty even getting their patients out to get flu shots or their booster. So I've gone in, and I've always been impressed with the sensitivity and respect and love that DSPs have. But to see it firsthand in their home, I wish I could bring all my colleagues with me. I just really would because I think the 5.4 would shoot to the moon right off the bat. So you know, we are on a floor. I think it's a good opportunity to make amends for things that have been left behind for a period of time. Let's put it that way. And we also have other work to do, particularly in regards to expanding workforce opportunity as well. So thank you for putting this all together. And it's so good to see so many familiar and friendly faces around this little Hollywood square that I got in front of me.
Thank you, Assemblyman McDonald. Anyone else? Or should I say who's next?
Hi, Jane. This is Dan Murray from the Warren Washington Albany ARC. First, I want to thank all the distinguished state legislators, their staff from their offices, and the guests for joining us today, and of course, the wonderful speakers who've shared their powerful and impactful testimonials. Jane mentioned the consequences of the current DSP staffing shortages within our field. And I just want to give one example that really hits home for all of us. The current crisis is causing a great many of us to have to make very heart-wrenching decisions, including uprooting people that are under our care from their homes, from their communities, from their homes, from their communities, and moving them to unfamiliar settings, either temporarily or permanently. We're taking people that have lived in these homes and these communities for years and years. And because we need to try to find economies of scale, we're putting them in other locations that they're not familiar with. If that doesn't hit home with all of us, I don't know what will. Something needs to happen. This should not happen. And we need to ensure that the people we support receive the critical services that they need. We're being left with no other choice than to do this. And this is really, really difficult on all of us, on our staff, on the families, and most importantly, on the people that we support. Our entire field is in need of a commitment from government to fund long-term, increased wages for the direct support professionals, the pillars of our field. Without them, we don't exist. Please help us. Please support us. We need you. And most importantly, the people that rely on us need you too. So thank you again for your time and your support.
Thank you, Dan. I see Daphne Jordan. She has her hand up.
Yes, hi.
My apologies.
It's okay. That's my name. Hello, everybody. I just want to thank you all for sharing your experiences. And that advocacy is really the best way to get to people, legislators, to understand your needs. You know, I think it's sad that for years, you know, this is my third budget, fourth budget as a legislator. But I worked for my predecessor before me, and it's the same thing every year. You know, you need your workers. You need them to be paid more. And it's sad that that hasn't been able to be done up until now. There is great hope this year with what we see in the proposed budget. As we have all heard, there's an abundance of money that New York State has. So if it's going to get done this year, this is the year for your funding to become a reality. So I hope, you know, that happens. And I will be rooting for you and advocating. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Jordan. And next, we have Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, please.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm just, it's lovely to be able to join with all of you. And I really, you know, just hearing everybody speak from the different perspectives, it's certainly a message and messages that I've heard before. You know, I also am a parent of a son who has high-functioning autism and has not relied upon services and is able to live independently now, thank God. But I mean, I know from my own experience that, you know, a consistent routine and familiar people is, has been critical to his ability to really live the best life that he can. He does so much better, well, we all do, right, as people? But you know, Terry does so much better if he knows the people around him. And he's just been able to make tremendous gains now. He's almost 30 years old now and has made tremendous gains. And it always amazes me that whatever challenges he's been faced with, he approaches his life with so much determination that he always surprises me. So I know that the love that you all provide, I mean, I agree that it is a labor of love, what the DSPs do. But love doesn't put food on their tables for their families either. So we have to make sure that we're taking care. And I agree that there has been far more than a decade of neglect of DSPs. And it is shameful. And I really do hope that today, that it's a new day. And I agree with what Senator Jordan said about the funds, the funding that, you know, if we don't start to catch up this year, it would be a tremendous failure of the budget, in my view, because we do have more funding than we did in the past. So it's all a question of priorities. And the governor certainly has been messaging that this is a priority of hers. So when we are moving forward in the budgeting process, and we'll see what those one-house budgets look like and then what the bills are actually going to come out looking like, I'll be right there to cheer or fight. And I would just say, just keep the advocacy up. You know, I mean, you've got us. You know, we're in your corner. But as my colleague, Assemblyman McDonald said, John said, you know, we wish that everybody out of the 150 members in the Assembly, for sure, could get this presentation and could hear about it. So it just continue to reach out to people maybe that you haven't spoken with before. But I know, I mean, this is my sixth year in the Assembly, and I've welcomed groups from day one coming in. And I know my colleagues have as well. So I think we're all very well aware. There have been some really effective rallies in Albany that have really, you know, shined a light on the situation. So I agree that, to me, I always, when I think about this, it's the number one priority is safety. We want our individuals with IDDD to be safe. And then there is quality of life and that issue that we've all been facing with increasing isolation over the last couple of years and maintaining relationships with caregivers so that we can have folks live their best life, you know, their best, not just a safe life, but their best life. That's what I want. And yeah, I just, thank you very much for inviting me. And I'll let others speak. But please know that this is very, very important to me. And I will always be a strong voice for what you need. And if you can continue to, whether it's feeding me talking points, I will write letters, I will rally, I will do what's necessary. I only wish I was one of the people that was in the room where it happens, but I'm not. So I will do, I could do everything but that. But thank you all for your efforts. And thanks for taking the time today to tell us what's on your mind, because we've definitely heard you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Assemblywoman Walsh. The good thing is, we're recording this. And so if we can flood the internet and maybe you can all share it, we can maybe get those 150 people to pay attention. So one of the things we want to think about also is we're so grateful and the fact that this budget does have some really good things in for us. But this is just, a lot of this is just one year. And we want to get this momentum going so that continually, every year, this is brought to the forefront because the wages will continue to be an issue. And we can't advocate enough for the direct support professionals that serve everyone. Who else would like to?
Hi. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone. And I know I've had meetings with Jack and Dan, and you know, they've kept me up to speed on this. And I think this is very effective. It's really good for me to hear all the different perspectives as we did today, hear from the speakers. And I think it's great, you know, that we're going to put this out and other members and hopefully the public. I mean, this is such a vital service to New York State. And now is the time, especially with, you know, a new executive, a lot of positive things coming out of the beginning of this year's budget process. So I'm optimistic that we're on the right path. So I want to thank you all for all that you do for our communities. And thank you for this opportunity.
Great, great. Thank you, Assemblywoman Simpson. Anyone else like to have the floor?
Well, my name is Ed Spain. I'm the president of the board at Rensselaer County A R C. You know, I want to thank Kathy Jiminow for so well and so articulately, you know, bringing all this into focus. And I think she's covered a couple of points that should be repeated. I mean, Assemblyman Walsh, how do we get into the room where it happens? And you know, I just want to tell all you folks that I believe we're preaching to the choir. It's clear that we have the support that we need. But our support people, our direct support professionals are being demeaned, in my view. We need a long-term solution to this. Every year, we grovel. We speak to you, our legislators. We speak to everyone about this. And everybody likes our ideas. They agree with us that support professionals should be paid more. And then they turn around. I mean, even the governor is suggesting that there be an increase in the pay that the support professionals that work directly for OPWDD increasing their pay this year. It's something that has been overlooked so long. Why do we have to grovel every year and beg people to pay attention to our needs? We have genuine needs. The people that we serve need good, adequate care. You know, they deserve a life in which they can be safe and happy and have meaningful lives. And we are doing it on a shoestring. Where, how do we get into that room? You know, maybe some of the legislators have some suggestions. Where do we go to get the people that make the final decisions hear our voices? So with that, I'll end. But I do want to thank our legislators. You have been most supportive. You have understood this issue so well. All we need is to get in there and find some way to make this point with the people that make the final decisions. Only then will we get a long-term solution to providing the people that care for those we serve with a living wage. It's so important. The time is now.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Spain. I'd like to turn it over to Eric Kaiser. He is the CEO of our Nice Ark, the Ark New York.
Thanks, Jane. I just want to echo some of the sentiments that have been already made today. First, I want to thank the legislators who are on this call. Seeing so many of you here today gives me great optimism that we're on the right path. And to Ed's point, that we are advocating in the right way. So I thank you. I also want to thank the local chapter CEOs for working together to put this together and get so many of the legislators who will have a say in the funding that we so desperately need together to hear the stories. And most, I'd like to thank the staff and the individuals we serve who spoke today. Their stories are echoed throughout New York State. This is not just a local region issue. This is something that's happening no matter where we are, Western, Downstate, Upstate, Central. And we have a real opportunity here in front of us. We finally have, I think, some alignment with the governor. I think we have alignment with the OPWDD commissioner. And we know that their budget bills will be sent forward to the legislature, and we'll need your support. So as Ed said, this is our opportunity. And we hope that you will be there to support our field and our workforce. It's desperately needed. And just a sincere thank you to all.
Thank you, Eric. Would anyone else like to make any additional comments? Questions?
I'm just going to say one thing in regards to what Judge Spain said. And you know, my second year here, I'll never forget, there was a proposed cut to the D population. And I never saw so many letters, emails, visits, the whole nine yards. So I think there's a sensitivity. I know there is. I would continue on an individual basis. But you know, you guys, the organization, when you look at statewide, as Erica's talking about, there's hundreds of thousands of people somehow connected to somebody who has somebody in their family. A quick email to your legislator. You can write a letter if you want. Trust me, they both get seen by somebody somehow. A steady drumbeat. The 5.4% campaign's been now in effect for about three or four months now. I mean, if I see Bill Gettman one more time, I'm going to just lose my hair because it's just like stamped to your forehead. But we know we can do better. But keep that steady drumbeat of information coming to get collectively throughout this state. It's probably close to a million people that are involved. That's a very large constituency. Although you don't know the person in Buffalo that's going through the same feelings that you do. So I would just keep it coming. You don't need to go manic about it, but keep it coming because there will be a lot of other competing voices down here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. That's good information. And we don't want to forget also the disparity between the state and the volunteers that was mentioned earlier for all doing the same type of work. So that's been an issue for many, many years with the voluntary organizations. So anyone else like to make a comment or have a question? Okay, with that, I want to thank the legislators and their staffers for all this time. It's very valuable. We know everyone is very, very busy. Thank you to our sister chapters. We're stronger together. And for all the individuals that came to support us today, whether it be staff, our self-advocates, family members, thank you. Your advocacy on our behalf is essential. Everyone have a great day, and thank you for your time.